Webster-Gulf T. Self-Storage Facility located on the south side of Ridge Road between Schucraft Road and Webster County Boulevard and LS, Webster Ridge Road. LLC requests preliminary site plan approval to allow the construction of a self-storage facility consisting of eight one-story and one three-story buildings on a 5.93-acre site located in MC named MC Commercial District under the Florida Department.
Good evening, Matt and Pastor Associates, been before this board three or four times out for this project, so I'll really try to keep this as quickly, quick as possible and opinionless as possible. At the last meeting, we were asked to resubmit some new materials showing somebody, addressing some of the comments from Mary Amato who is the group owner of Roosters. So we, after the meeting, we went out and spoke with Mary and we were able to resolve everything, which I'm sure she can confirm if Rooster's here tonight. And I can go through, I'll go through those items with you, some of the changes that were made on the site plan from the last meeting that really addressed those concerns. The first item is a formal easement over the roadway, the driveway, roadway, whatever you want to call it, into the development that allows Roosters to tie in any future development to tie in. The second being, we located the access driveway location for Roosters and if any development is to happen to the west, so we spotted a location for that to occur, so that it's a four-way, everything's lined up. Beyond that, which you won't see on your plan, which you'll see on our final submission, we, the developer, agreed to pave Roosters curb cut, five foot under the property line, just so that it's more concrete as to where the location of that is. The other comment that had come up was in regards to a light pole in the corner. We showed that on the site plan and we also have a note that it is to remain. Another thing that had come up was how much are you removing of the area that we use for parking? So the developers agreed to remove only what he needs to construct the buildings and put the fence around and then will allow Roosters to approach if they need to as much as we're able to. The last thing that the developer worked out with Roosters, Mary, was to do a, put together a cross-access easement for Roosters driveway because the developer owns the parcel to the east of Roosters as well. And this is a really good benefit because it limits any need for a curb cut if anything goes on in that parcel. And it also puts a formal agreement in place for Roosters and whatever does eventually happen in that parcel. It also gives a bet, helps with the development and improvement of that entrance as well. So there won't be a need for a curb cut when the parcel to the east is developed because they can share the one that's on Rooster's, which if you look at the plan, goes really right over the top of the property line. So it's somewhat encroaches now, but will formalize an easement, so it's no longer encroaching on it to be working. I know there was some question about property lines and stuff like that. Those were all verified, confirmed. There was more, some question about some stray notes that we had on our plan removed and we worked everything out with Mary. With that said, I'll, oh, there was a few other things. One was Mr. Cachani requested a brick material on the front, which is difficult to see maybe, but it's there. And then also there was Mr. Anderson asked for some additional landscaping in front of building B. So we doubled up the green landscaping. It's a evergreen style material, or tree better, that will help block the sod of that. So there's twice as many trees there than there were before. So with that said, I'll open up to any questions. I think we've.
You got brick on there, but you have, it doesn't show it on the legend, it shows you the driveway.
I'm sorry, where?
In front of the building? We talked about three-story, you know, put a brick on that?
Yeah. It's, um.
There's nothing here saying or showing it.
Yeah, I guess it's, if you look close enough, you'll see.
Yeah, well, my eyes, I can see a couple little lines.
I know, it's typical.
But I don't see anything that says it's correct.
Okay.
Your legend says it's something else.
Let's call it out as drive it, I think that's a, that's definitely a typo. The legend didn't get updated, because if you look at the legend, the legend.
The other thing, going through this thing, unless there's another drawing that you have, the preliminary approval, there are requirements. This doesn't mean it. There's no elevations in here or anything on the actual drawing. I mean, this, this looks like something you built in maybe California or Las Vegas or whatever, you know, but this is what you're proposing, but.
Yeah, that's the elevation.
It's gotta be, yeah, but it's gotta be in your drawings, you know what I mean? It's gotta, should be in a full set of drawings. Like, all your drawings have.
Yeah, usually we submit a separate elevation.
Unless we've got one.
That's.
If we got one, if we got one, Josh, you need it in a separate drawing.
I think time that we've ever made a submission, and I don't know if things are different now, but we submitted our civil plans and then typically architectural plans or elevation plans are separate. So we submit elevations separately, not actually within our civil engineering plans separately, because it doesn't really, it doesn't really include civil engineering. That's how we've done it in the past, I don't know if.
No.
Yeah.
I always guess, this set of drawings, preliminary file and drawings, preliminary file are pretty much the same thing. See, you've got it, Josh, you've got.
I don't know. I've got the same thing that.
Same thing I got?
Yeah.
So there's no set of drawings that you can sign?
Yes.
Exactly, so there's no elevations in the building, but you're on that sheet. Isn't that normally what you get on a draw, on a plan?
I've seen it done both ways.
I mean, we go file this, you go sign, you go sign for final approval, you go sign your MyLARs, or anything else. This would have to be attached with it or something.
We can certainly attach it, yeah, if that's something.
I think, see, that's not.
The thing is with MyLAR is, is this, MyLAR is not going to put this in color and that pretty, that's the only thing. Like I said, we typically, we do separate civil engineering plans and separate building plans, and the building plan usually comes along with elevations. But that's how we've done it in the past. And if I'm, we'll make sure that it's included as part of, as part of the submission or final signature.
I think you should, I think you should have your elevations, your drawing elevations showing brick, whatever you're proposing to use. If you've got metal on the underside, drive it, whatever, whatever's there showing it, spell it out. Again, if it goes along with something like this, it says drive it, so.
Yeah, so this, this shows the metal on the back?
Yeah.
And it shows this, it's difficult to see the brick, but it's there.
Yeah, I know, but it doesn't say it. It says drive it, it doesn't say drive it.
Okay.
So now if we prove it, we say, okay, you come back and say, oh, no, you guys approved this.
Right.
It's gotta drive it, there it is. Then what do we do? You've already been there with some of the other folks here, so that's why I don't want to go into that group. The fencing, you got fencing going around? I'm still upset that we can't get this road connected somewhere as anywhere. Help me out again with Roosters. Roosters is going to go where now? Will they just keep their exit going out?
Yeah, so they're gonna keep the exit going out to Ridge Road, because they need it for track to trail drop off. And they're also gonna tie in back here with us. And this driveway here that they have currently kind of straddles the property line, it'll also be access for the property to the east. So there won't be a need for a curb cut for the property in the east. The one that's currently there will go away.
Should they have some documentation for your lights as you're proposing and the buildings going up? Is that something we require in other projects or in this more, Fords Road, Moore Up and Ridge Road?
Yeah. Yeah, I believe they're all, they're all shown.
There's something that was in the file, it says it's looking like it.
Okay, so you want a cut sheet of the light?
Yes, something that's showing what it's looking like.
Sure.
So it isn't glaring now. I'm sure you know that. Anybody, any other issues?
I'm seeing that there's preliminary site plan approval with conditions. For the current subject.
For this, for this project, we haven't got the preliminary approval yet.
Well, no, for the subdivision of taking off Rooster's plan and also subdividing the other, because the minutes from April 23rd, 2015, say, in summary, is approved, provides preliminary site final conditions. I don't see that, talk about final approval.
I don't know, that is the 25th.
Yeah, then even going back to the minutes from that then, although supposed to have been a condition for final approval, which right now it's occurring, it's gonna be, we'll find out whatever it's made. But we're supposed to engage the P L T, talk about the access road to the, pin down the property, and it's also conditioned such that the building permits to issue for whatever development is going, that the Roosters driveway will be closed. That's actually one of the.
Final conditions for final approval or?
It's for preliminary approval. And right now I don't have a form for any record of final approval for this subdivision.
I'm Brian McKenna, I'm representative of Malboro. I can authorize a withdrawal of that application. Because that, that was hypothetically, the project that that was done for never happened.
Okay, so Rooster subdivision never happened?
The project you referring to where we were developing, there's preemptive potential for development, where we're now doing the life storage?
Right.
That never materialized.
Right.
So I wasn't involved, but part of that whole process, with preliminary approval, that had the subdivision, what you see as a subdivision here was actually just preliminary. I don't see minutes for that ever being issued as a final. And so the issue I see now is that we have the forest application where someone could find a final approval. This has never been subdivided.
We did go through.
We did go through.
We did go through.
Yeah.
They don't have the minutes.
We do.
And we pulled the minutes for this project and the only one that comes up is preliminary.
We went through a final subdivision approval, actually I recall me and Josh and.
Do you have a copy of the map?
I don't have it with me, but you can see the property boundary right now, because that's what we did was.
So what we need to see is a copy of the file map?
It's, it is, what you see in the, in the plans that we've submitted includes the project boundary, the boundary, because we did the subdivision.
Right, I'm saying for the original subdivision.
You want a copy of the map?
There should have been a file document that could have.
There definitely is, yes.
Have all the final approvals listed.
Sure.
Is it more flat or not?
It was definitely.
What, what did it say?
We have, like I said, right now, when I look at the minutes and the last time this came up was in April of 2015. This is just preliminary.
I can provide a copy of the file map, it's not an issue. We just filed it.
Those eight months ago, right?
Yeah.
Six, eight months ago.
But then, but when those final approvals were done?
It was, it didn't need it because it was less than the threshold, it was three lots.
I think.
But Roosters, Roosters was already subdivided out. So Roosters was not as part of the subdivision, it was, we subdivided these two lots out. These two here.
Now, what I'm talking about is the minutes.
I may have clarification.
Sure.
Can you talk to your phone? My understanding is back when everything went through in 2015, that was based upon when the dentists had bought the front lot and they had planned on taking the roadway all the way to Schucraft. But I guess there's wetlands or something back there and the roadway can't go through there. So that was put in place back in 2015 if the roadway ever went to Schucraft.
Well, actually, the, this approval I'm looking at too regarding for 2015, talks about that road being built and there was a route that was allowed to get it over to Schucraft. So it's not an issue that it can't be built, it's just that it was never built.
Same with, you know, these.
And that's what I know, if that road wasn't going in, then I don't lose the driveway, but now I keep.
It talks about in the memorandum, understanding, it talks about discussion of putting in the access road, you know, at such tiny, certain square footage, this development, you have that square footage available, and that's a condition of any kind of permits for any kind of development going on here, because if your driveway goes away and this driveway has to go in, and this is just preliminary approval.
Think you want your driveway to go away?
I'd rather keep my driveway.
So then we have to go back to the re-subdivision decision that was made back in 2015, find out if it was ever finalized.
One thing. But don't your approvals only last for a year?
Well, then your property's not subdivided.
That was.
That's the problem.
Well, it was subdivided, then we purchased and we were out.
No, any record of anything in someone?
The recent one.
Yes. It's something like it right now.
Yeah.
And it's fine.
Right. I can't speak to what happened with Rooster's site. We can just act that.
Yeah, it's the one that I was.
Because that came into play with the dentist.
Whatever is subdivided, our parcel approval.
That came into play with the dentist.
Also, I'm enjoying the concern that the lane to the west was below the lane to the west, it was development to.
Yeah, we, the developers.
This parcel over here.
To the west of.
Roosters.
Not to the west of.
Or, or to the east.
He's talking.
Oh.
No, we aren't all that.
The wetland is. The wetland is down here.
Way down here.
That parcel right there, you know, it's.
This parcel?
I don't know.
Because that's the parcel, it's supposed to have the road on it, and that is part of the overall subdivision, the overall concept for the site.
Yeah, see, those are the comments that were made way back then to agree through this, that the road had to go in and.
Can we, can I just offer, can we try to get this back?
No, turn.
Well, let's just, if we could just try to look at where we are today. That was based on up to thirty-five, over thirty-five thousand feet of construction, this MOU apparently, which we're aware of, there's nothing to do with, but we're aware of it. We've got eighty thousand feet, we generate ten cars of traffic a day, we could have built a thirty-four thousand nine hundred square foot medical office building back there with hundreds and hundreds of cars a day. And a road would not have been required. None of that would have mattered, because we would have been under thirty-five thousand feet. It was originally fifty, but Tony and I worked on it eleven years ago. Somehow it got to thirty-five. So at thirty-four nine, we could have a parking lot at Ridge Road and not have to have to put that road. We're down before you with a phenomenal project, we've got great cooperation with Roosters, it's a staple of this community, we've worked out a great situation for them, including allowing them to use our surplus land, we moved our fence closer to our buildings so they could park on our land where the whole football team shows up after a big name. The parcel to the east is owned by our team, our developer. There's a current curb cut right there, right now, that services that acre, that's been subdivided. We're not asking for a curb cut. We're working with Mary and Mr. Schneider to improve her curb cut she has now that she uses and needs, and we're gonna be conditioned by having to develop that one point two five acres, or whoever does it. And they're not gonna get a curb cut. And the first thing you're gonna ask for is where's this curb cut to my parcel? And we're gonna say, you don't have one. Why? Because as part of the overall master plan, it would make more sense for the town, the community, and circulation to cooperate with our neighbor. So when we develop that, we're gonna repave that, we're gonna make it all nice and nice, and then the parcel to the east is gonna have to go in that driveway to access their parcel, because they will not have a curb cut at Ridge Road. So we're actually eliminating the curb cut. So I'm just trying to bring it back to today, 2021. In hindsight, the developer made a mistake in 2015. I think they thought they had a project, in fact, I know later, they preemptively came into the town and got out over their skis. The market turned, there was no demand, and we all know what happened the last five or six years, hence we got our variance from the zoning board. And I apologize that we've confused, because even for Matt and I, it's taken us several months to figure it out. So I apologize. But the reality is today, we have a much, much better project than we would have had five years ago. Much less intensity, no demand in the school district, virtually no demand on fire, police and ambulance, and we're gonna pay our taxes, and we're cooperating with the neighbor. So I'm just asking the board to please consider where we are today. We do have a subdivision filed, as you see it here today. The technicalities I won't speak to, it's beyond my pay grade, but I'm confident in Pastor and Josh and staff, that if there's a nuance or that we need to figure out, we need to figure it out. But the 2015 project is not on the table today. This one, and it's a much better project, it's a much, much better project.
That was some of the questions even back then, going through the minutes, relate to that, what happens if, and all the ifs didn't happen? And that's where we got literally plain English screwed out of the world, what? It's not able to happen now. So I guess we can just say goodbye to that part, deal with what we've got now? I'm not happy with it either, I mean, I think this is, so now should have been handled differently back then.
But it's, it's me, the ultimate right. The current configuration, the Roosters parcel subdivided out, the McDowell parcel subdivided out, the current shape of this parcel. How did that happen since we didn't get final approval?
You've got a map, you said?
Yeah, I mean, we, to develop, when we subdivided these two pieces out, we had to get all the information here, and we had, I believe, all the information for this lot. So, so I'm very confident.
Yeah, I'm not interested in that one. I'm interested in the original map file to get those two parcels subdivided out. And also very curious about the parcel to the west of self-storage areas where the wetland is, if that is an intended, or this is actually part of this.
No, this is owned by the senior facility. This parcel is owned, I believe, by the senior facility. It's not, this is our boundary. Talking about this parcel, this is owned by the.
Folks, Conifer acquired that and built the Fordham Senior Community back there, it's one two-story building, they got a land for a second one that I don't believe that ever got built. But Conifer was the original developer and owner, I don't know if he's still owning it, I would never know that, but. I think they have another, I think they have root jobs, you know, the building now, memory search.
They do. It was a phase two.
Which they would use energy station to, it's currently going to services western in the heart of us right now, they would use that same access, so it would have no impact on Ridge Road. They wouldn't be able to use our new curb cut, is that exclusive to Roosters and our self-storage?
Can you just talk to me, please make sure you can make it?
Sorry about that.
So this cow is still in place at Webster, they actually own the wetland here?
Correct.
All right, what it is, it is, I guess. There may be a final approval somewhere that we never got, never actually got recorded in or filed, I don't know. But if you've got a map showing that it was filed, present that.
Yes. I can just go to the county tax maps too.
Why don't we do this, like, I'm gonna suggest we just table this thing right now. And you can do, you know, move forward, do a preliminary file, we're just here for preliminary anyway, so if we move forward with preliminary filing, we do that all the same way if everything's working. I think the plans need to be completed, show some of these things we just mentioned.
Okay.
Maybe elevation is that, exactly. I mean, I'm looking at the drawings, he's here, and I really don't know what the front of this is looking like from Ridge Road, you know what I mean?
Okay, so you want a perspective drawing?
Yeah, regular.
This, this is an elevation which is, which is what the town requires.
Elevations that go, that's pretty, it's colorful, it's nice.
Right.
But the ones that go with the set of drawings is the approval for the approval.
That, this is what we typically submit.
Separate, geez, no.
Yes, it's.
And we've gotten stuff like that, but we get drawings showing the elevations in the sheets.
I mean, typically, they're not even, the ones that are in the actual plans that are even black colored, they're usually black and white.
I agree.
So, I mean, I can submit black and white ones or, but this is how we've always, this is how we've always handled it here, so.
And then somebody's gotta remember the staple list of this to get it to calling a complete, or it should all be in one thing.
What I'll, what I'll propose doing is just taking these elevation sheets that you guys have and including in the quiet.
That's right.
It's a matter of thickly and all.
But, yeah, show it, what's this looking like from Ridge Road, basically, the front elevation, the north elevation, with the brickhead and so on and so forth.
Can I just ask, can I just ask, practical question, Colin? So, they've labeled the elevations, I look at it, and it says drive it, but it's drawn as Mason River, we're gonna do Mason, just like you asked for. So my question for the board is, that elevation is mirrored after an elevation that we think is appropriate for the use and the color scheme from Life Storage is the operator. Other than labeling it brick, which it is.
No, that's all it's gotta handle, the label.
Having included in your total pack.
Says brick.
So you've got all four elevations, front, back, side.
Yeah, it just says brick, says drive it, says metal, whatever it's gonna be. But this one here, somebody goes and look at the drawing down the road and it's saying something different, so just change the word, that's all. That's all I looked at, I mean, so Josh showed me, he says, it looks like they're putting brick at it today, we were talking about. And I'm looking at it saying, yeah, it looks like brick, you know, it's a small, with these, which is accepted. But it says drive it, that's all.
Yeah, it was, because it was drive it before and I never got about it, so.
Not the color, it's not the color of the brick. Is it gonna be, gonna look like drive it, or is it gonna be?
It's gonna look this color, because this is the color that, this kind of goes along with the color scheme of Life Storage crap. So that, that's why we picked that color, brick. So inner tone color.
No chance of changing that, so something that's more pronounced from the road, because you're back one hundred and seventy-five feet, you know? But, you know, something that shows in color, something that makes it look like a nice building. Don't want it to look like the, you know, Adver or something. Yeah?
It's looking pretty nice.
Well, yeah, I think.
That's a color theme that we're trying to bottle after the brand, it's like U-Haul is orange and whatever, it's a lot more attractive than U-Haul.
Brian, you've been there, Brian, remember, they used to like the arches that McDonald's took? Yeah, but women like the arches, change it, you know, they can do things and they don't have to be all.
So you'd like to see a darker brick?
Yeah, I think so, because Dave, is that what you're referring to? I would agree with that.
Brick that looks like brick.
Guys, we either.
So.
Something, something that shows, that takes a look at, if you remove that, it doesn't look like nothing, you know? Think about it, all right?
Is this the same color that they have over the road? No, they have the same building in the building.
They're in, they're in the, they've got new ground up construction, they've got a couple of different themes, but the color scheme is a template, if you hope that they ask us. And maybe tough to see this, it's important to do, but that's, that depends on what Mr. Jay record, I guess, so it's, with this block there in the front.
Yeah, I think about it, whatever, if there's a reason, if you can't do it, well, just explain it. I'd like to see it, like Dave said, though, a dark in color, that show a lot, a lot better than. All right, what else, anything? Was that what I keep thinking about?
Yeah, I don't know. You made a comment about being subdivided because it was lost in a certain order.
Well, when we subdivided these two lots out here recently, we did not need board approval. I'm pretty confident we didn't come for.
When you added the line, making it one and two?
Yes.
Right.
We did not come for any board approval, because there was only two lots subdivision.
But do you remember when, when all of the, I don't know, it was, it was well before my time at Pastor, so I, I have no idea. I know that it was done because we had, we had to call that information and create the subdivision now. So I know that it was, that is correctly, those are the correct property lines. I just don't know what was filed, I don't have, I can look in the research.
Because I can guess what I was doing. It was a parcel.
Because I guess what I'm thinking is, it was a parcel, I don't know how big it was to begin with, and that's been subdivided out a few times. Do you remember the old Roman?
Yeah, I remember what the acreage was, it was cast or spin, I think it was. That was a few years ago.
Oh, I kept talking back when this first came in and we did the initial review and all that.
I don't recall any.
So kind of bits and pieces have been carved out over time and.
Well, that's what killed it.
Yeah.
That's what killed the whole program, some pieces of it were sold off. And once it was sold off, then there's no way of accessing those properties, that's where we get.
And it appears too that, you know, the title wasn't given.
Yeah, as far as I know, I can't.
It's not as tall as I'd be like saying thing, but it was less than four perches, and all of them subdivided out in it. And so it lined up with a lot, lot of configuration material. So what you're saying actually as the applicant, this is not a continuation of a previous project or something, this is standalone individual, independent property, however the rest of the thing was approved with that kind of layout or element, that's, is that, is that accurate for how it sounds like this is going on, this is standalone property that you've got purchased? Does anyone have any business relationship with previous owner?
Previous owner is the same owner now, isn't it? Yes, yes.
Got something, question for the board, can this be considered effectively new application or is this really?
Well, I think if.
Seems like we're final on any.
Yeah, that's, we're seeing that as a preservative motion for no, no minutes for a final approval, but if you've got a drawing, shows that whatever you filed.
Yeah, I will see what I can.
That's the thing to dig up and say, here, yours, you couldn't have gotten that unless you got a final approval.
It's more of an.
Yeah, I'll see what I can dig up. I'm I'm sure there's something that kind of caught us.
All right, and guess what, what goes into playing through, we have to find out how.
What's that?
We have to find out too, really, the validity of random understandings or any other.
The the memorandum of understanding was never.
That was never filed.
It was never filed, nor were any of the potential easements either.
See, that's it, and all of that stuff somehow slipped through the door and.
It's too bad, because it's like 10 pages of single-spaced deliberations that are a giant waste of time.
Yeah.
That's why we need to get some fresh reading of this. When we get it.
This is where our subdivision plan was filed, map page, and sign off.
Okay.
Do you want to read that in?
Uh, no, I want this so that I can.
What have you got?
She's got the live on the page of whether it's subdivided.
The subdivision was filed June 26, 2015, Libra 350 MAX, page 47, all sign offs occurred in June 2015.
Just repeat it very.
This is the subdivision for a piece of the rock, which is Brewster's. The subdivision was filed June 26, 2015, Libra 350 MAX, page 47, all sign offs occurred in June 2015.
And that was two months after the preliminary approval then? Is somewhere, it may have just not gotten posted, that's all I can do there. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, just to recap, so Mr. Kishani, you're looking for, we'll update the elevations we're putting in the plans.
Yes.
Sure, and was there anything else?
Well, you, you, your lights, we showed.
The lights, yeah.
Cut sheet of the lights, your fence, what kind of fence, what's?
Uh, probably the aluminum picket fence, right, the fence that's going down, black and white.
I think it's like, you know, like, like polyplastic permanent fence, now that you see, I think it's black.
So it's a neat, clean, okay, so it's not barbed wire?
No, 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 it's part of it.
Yeah, okay. All right. But show that, show a piece of, you know.
Yeah.
What you're showing, what you're showing.
Yeah.
Yeah, that way we've got everything, that goes in the file, now we can go something.
Who cares if the light poles get updated for Brewster's? If that's getting updated, should that match? The light pole on the Brewster's property, should that match the rest of those light poles?
But it matches all the other poles on my property.
It's old, that is old, one of the three.
Mary just mentioned, just for the record, that it mapped the hole that is on the corner of the property matches all of her light poles on her property.
And then whatever lights are going out in the building just down, but not downstairs.
Yes.
All right, so you want to table this then to what?
Two weeks.
Two weeks?
Yeah. The next date, and then also, we would be able to get preliminary and final at that next meeting as well.
I'm sorry?
We can get preliminary and final at the next meeting.
Yeah, if everything is over, yeah, and I think that's the goal.
Yes.
You can't get preliminary to anything, if everything is in order with the stuff, you've got that additional paperwork and stuff, it should be made for it. Okay, so your stuff has to be done by people that have.
I know last time we were here was seven days prior, seven, seven days prior to the meeting. So May 4th meeting?
So May, May 4th? So next meeting? Motion to table it?
Make a motion. I'll make a motion to table the, what, the storage facility until May 4th.
Give me a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.